I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you and welcome everyone for attending our special board meeting of the School Board of Evergreen Public Schools. Ooh, people are standing. Thank you very much. That's wonderful. For those of you that would like to join us, please stand for the other ladies.
I am by the ladies. I am the United States of America and two republics for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have any scouts in the audience? Would you like, would you please introduce yourself? What school you attend and maybe what badge you're working on?
I go to Pacific and I'm working on communications.
Okay, what's your name?
Isaac.
Ah, well, welcome to the meeting. Thanks for coming. So as we go through the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adopt our agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda has been adopted as presented. Next, we have the board consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
I move to adopt the board's consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the board consent agenda has been approved. Next, we have the superintendent's consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for its approval.
I move to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the board's consent agenda has been adopted. Next, we have the superintendent's report. So Dr. John Stich, I'll turn it over to you.
I've just got a couple of things to share tonight. Last Thursday, we had a very nice visit from Belinda Oakley, who is the CEO for Chartwell's K-12 Division. She's been in that position for six months, nine months, something like that. So she's coming around visiting and had a great opportunity to participate in the At Your Service program at Crestline Elementary School where many of our fifth grade students had the opportunity to go through some etiquette classes and learn proper table manners. And then we had a violin-accompanied four-course lunch where the students got to exercise those manners and correct me on some of my manners. But it was a really great experience to be able to have that type of a meal and give those kids just that kind, that experience in their lives. And I wanted to commend Chartwell's for bringing that program to Evergreen in the last year and look forward to the next one. Also, last week, we had, I believe all of our schools participated in the Shakeout Grill on 10/18 on 10/18. So we did earthquake drills last week. We did not coordinate it from a district level, so that's something we may take it up to the next level next year and see if we can do a sort of emergency response, emergency management system training, and incorporate central office response to the potential cascading quake. Also, last week, went up to the news organization after the McClary lawsuit has been put to rest by the State Supreme Court. They are an organization wondering about their future direction. And so they, we discussed a couple of options. One would be disbanding, one would be would there be another potential lawsuit coming from the news organization? That's the two extremes. And the organization decided to end up somewhere in the middle as sort of a central information-receiving processing group because it has been, or the news organization has had the ability to bring together many of the education organizations across the state that sometimes don't play well in the sandbox together. And because we have played well in that, within that group, the decision was made to keep that group active and continue to meet. We re-elected a new Board of Officers and they'll be working on just that information-gathering and processing and then also if they catch wind of any future lawsuits, just trying to make sure that any potential lawsuits brought against the state relative to school funding wouldn't run contrary to what would be perceived as a probable winning lawsuit and that they're consistent in the messaging and the positioning of those lawsuits. So I'll be continuing to be active in that organization. I talked to Mike Dunn, the new president, and he plans to come down here and meet and discuss some of the future roles that we may be able to play in that, so I'll keep you posted. And then the last thing was, it was kind of touching this weekend, Friday night, to go to the football game at Union, Union High Background Football Game and see the Background Football Team get an amazing display of sportsmanship with the banner for Coach Rigo. And then do attend the Celebration of Life on Saturday for Coach Rigo. And, you know, his security staff and worked in the district for many years, touched many people, and they just wanted to recognize that and say our community has lost a great person.
Okay, thank you, John. Next on our agenda is focus on student results. And on the agenda is a discussion about one of our major policies, R2, which is Results Policy II on academic achievement. And we were here to discuss the monitoring report. We discussed it at the workshop the last time we got together after the board meeting. But at this time, the board has received the monitoring report from Dr. Stich. And I turn it over to you, John, because we're going to be looking at a first reading tonight.
Right. And R2 is our academic achievement results policy the board adopted a little over a year ago. We went through and did an interpretation on that. And just, even though it's a very short policy, I'll actually read the whole thing because it is so short. Under academic results, it says students will think critically, creatively, and be able to analyze, evaluate, and synthesize complex ideas from multiple perspectives. And that's the overarching policy statement that the board has said that you want for results for all of our students. It's then broken down into two areas. Policy II, R2.1 is students will achieve academically at a personally challenging rate. And R2, students will demonstrate literacy and learning in all academic career-focused and elective subjects. So after the board adopted this, we worked as a cabinet to come up with what are those indicators that we're going to bring to the board annually to demonstrate first would have set a baseline for our current student academic performance and then create annual performance goals for improvement. So last meeting and workshop, we presented the board with a series of data points that we started to put together. When you take a look at those two academic achievement areas, R2 really has to do with student growth with a personally challenging rate. And we set some expectations that all students will make a minimum of 90% growth annually. And so we pulled data from a variety of sources that I'll go through in just a second. And R2 is more about making sure that our students are at benchmark. And the agreement that we have with the board when we did an interpretation of this policy was that any student that's within, that is in the Evergreen School District for five years or more, we will have them at grade level in all areas. And for students entering kindergarten, as long as they come to us at age, scoring at age three or above in all six of the WAC Kids Assessment Areas, we'll be responsible for having them at grade level. And then for the kids who haven't been with us five years or came in below three years old, we would look at that growth model for the first five years, but we still would be expected to have them at grade level at the end of five years independent of what growth they get in any one given year. So we brought some data to the board last year, or last week. And I was just thinking it would have been nice to be able to put this up on the screen and kind of walk through this data, which I will try to do next time. Sorry. But one of the things we looked at with this data is we get different assessment results at different points during the year. So the, this is one of, we think it's going to be three reports, at least two, but maybe three reports throughout the year that you'll get every single year, breaking the student results down in different ways. So the, under R2.1, we took a look at individual student growth in math, and we're using iReady for first through eighth grade. And we have those results for both math and reading. And this year's numbers are setting that baseline. And then we'll be discussing what the district results performance goals will be based on those baselines, looking at improvement. We're also looking at, for benchmark, we're looking at math scores using iReady in K-1, II for both reading and math. And then we're looking at using the S-Back in third through eighth grade for benchmark. And we presented those data points to the board. And those benchmark data points include, as I said earlier, just the students that came in at three years older or above or have been within the district for at least five years. And you can see that that change, that really gives a different range of how many students we count in those areas, going all the way from 1,363 kindergarteners down to a low of 554 third graders. So our third grade class was either came in, a combination of came in later has been highly mobile for that group of K-1, II students that are now in third grade. We're also looking at the science test results for fifth and eighth grade. But beyond just those core academic areas, the board also has expectations for cultural enrichment. So we track the percentage of students that are participating in arts classes and passing. And surprisingly, it was only 39% of our high school students participate in some type of an arts class, with 37% of them passing, which would be a 95% passage rate. By comparison, we're going to be tracking the number of students taking CTE classes. And that's 73% of our high school students are taking some sort of a CTE class with 92% passage rate for a total of 67% achieving credit in CTE classes last year. The other thing we took a look at was how many students are passing algebra in as early as eighth grade. And we see a wide variety based on a demographic breakdown. So our Asian students, 46.6%, are completing algebra before the end of eighth grade. And down to a low of our ELL population, only 1.1% of our ELL students were able to pass algebra. So we'll be looking at the disproportionality as well as the overall performance rate and trying to address those as we set our future performance goals. And a last piece of data that we presented the board, which I was really excited about, and I shared this with all staff in an email today. I'd love to see it on the front page of the paper. Because we looked at, if we, you know, with the statement of, we said if you give us a student for five years, we will get them where they need to go. We took a look at how does Evergreen perform for the students that enter our program prior to eighth grade? So they come in in eighth grade, they're with us, eighth grade all the way through high school. Our graduation rate for students who have been with us from eighth grade on is 98.78%. Almost 99%. So it's a true statement that if, if a parent can get their student into our school district at the start of eighth grade and keep them here, we will get them across the graduation stage. And that's a huge testament to the work being done in the classrooms, not only at the high school and middle school level, but even the elementary and getting the kids ready so that they have those foundational skills to be able to get across the graduation stage. So that's the first round of data that we have for the board relative to results. We cleaned up the format a little bit from what we had in the workshop last week. And Matt and James will continue to work on looking at whether we need to do a third report or just a second report later in the spring that has the balance of those indicators that the board wants. And then we'll be talking, as we get all that data together, coming back and revisiting whether we want our goals to look like towards performance improvement. So based on that, at this time, I'd like to recommend that the board, the board accepts the monitoring report for R2 for academic achievement as presented for first reading and then move forward for second reading and establishment of the baselines.
Okay, thanks, John. So at this time, I'd like to call upon the audience to see if you have any comments or questions about what you've heard or what we're trying to do in terms of results and academic achievement. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to come forward with any comments or Seeing none, we'll now close the audience participation portion of this discussion on this policy. And I'll throw it over to the board for a motion.
I recommend the board accepts the monitoring reports for R2 academic achievement benchmarks as presented for the first reading and move them forward for a second reading, establishing baselines.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. So now, as a board, what comments or questions do we have for John?
I don't know if I have any questions, but I know that I was quite pleased when I saw the graduation percentage. I don't think, because I, what's our overall graduation? In the mid-eighties?
Mid, mid-up for eighties.
So when we take that number and then we see that we're at 98.5% based on if the student's been with us for the five years prior to graduation, I think it's a pretty remarkable number. Because one of our things that we've been, since I've been on the school board and I own this board and, you know, district teams have been working on is 100% graduation rate. And when we see that number, we're almost there with students that have been with us. So we just got to figure out a way to get everybody across, but it's really a promising sign.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I think that, I'm so anxious to be a year from now and have us be in the first monitoring report of results, because right now, we're just establishing baselines. I think it's going to be really interesting to see what the data provides. This is the most information that we've had that's been in policy for years, well, ever in the district. And so I think it's really important that we stay true to the fidelity of what we're trying to do here and stay firmly within our policies to ensure compliance. And that everybody from the board, all through the system, is very aware of the things that we're monitoring and what the expectations are. So we're now in that point where we can start really filtering that out throughout the system. It's going to be kind of exciting to see.
Right.
Yeah.
Because through coherent governance, we're really holding the district accountable for results, since it's the first look at what those results look like, right?
And as we're seeing these results, kind of on my to-do list is how are we going to be able to display these results and communicate these results where people can see them on a regular basis and know this is what our baseline is and here's what our improvement goals are, and we know that we're working towards those common goals. So the desire and our goal is to be able to get these out and make these publicly available where people can see them on a regular basis.
I think it would be nice, too, just that the one bit of news we had about students that are with us from eighth grade on, at least eighth grade on, and how significant that is in the graduation rates, to be able to somehow get that out to the community. I think this would be a nice little piece of communication.
It's 98.78 out of the 1,390 kids, and that four-year rate, that's 17 seniors who didn't graduate after four years. And that makes it possible to know their names and circumstances and help them. And that's, that's the most remarkable of the outcomes. I can remember talking to high school, no, high school seniors, high school principals about the graduation rate and hearing about them knowing that they could get all of the 30 who started in their senior year all the way to graduation, 30, 45, which for our class sizes is still a way to know their names and circumstances. And I've always been really happy with the fact that they can do that and the fact that they and the counselors and associate principals do keep track of them individually. So this is an affirmation of their efforts for sure, and it's really heartening.
It's also, the other thing we have to think about with this, and this involves the whole community, is the mobility rates. I mean, part of the problem are kids coming and going into our system and into other systems. The county shares a lot of the same kids. And this whole conversation that we're having about affordable housing and having enough housing and all of that plays into this. And it's really troubling because that's the thing we can't really control, are the kids coming and going. But we know if we keep them, they're going to be in good shape. So that's a bigger conversation that we need to be having with our other elected leaders as to what some of the ramifications are of the housing crisis.
And if you look at the, the research John had, his new version of his visual learning book, for visible learning, has the correlation of mobility is one of the worst things that you can have towards student learning. It's down there with summer vacation and television. Those are like the bottom three things when it comes to student learning, of actual correlation and impact.
It'll be interesting, too, to keep watching that graduation rate in that S-COR 24 because what year are we in now? This year's freshmen or last year's freshmen were the first to have the 24 credit requirement. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out, too, in this, because now they're being held to the 24 credits. And kind of some of the research, too, that says that if a freshman doesn't pass a class their first year, that that kind of puts them on a lower trajectory to graduate. And so it'll be some interesting data to kind of keep watching that now that the 24 credit requirement's in place. Even though we have done a lot of work to make sure that we have options for kids, to make sure that beyond the regular high school day, that they have options to make that up or take additional coursework.
Any other comments or questions? I had a comment. And so, yeah, this is really interesting. It's a fascinating look. Like Vic said, we've never seen this type of information to this detail. And I also agree that graduation rate looks phenomenal. What doesn't look as good to me, and maybe I'm just trying to understand it because we're establishing the baseline data, is the growth data. And so I just wanted to understand that a little bit better. So I guess in terms of math and reading, we're taking snapshots of the students' performance in the fall and the spring and then trying to extrapolate that data to project at least a 90% growth for the grade level.
And we're using iReady. So it's a similar test, and iReady is a nationally normal test that many districts use across the nation. And they have testing windows in the fall and in the spring. As long as we're within a testing window, theoretically, you have the same amount of instructional time for our students between those two windows as any other student is taking it. So then iReady takes it and runs all that data through and compares our students to the growth of other students all the way across the nation. So we had hoped to see those numbers a little bit higher. That's part of, part of the reason we're giving you this data is so you can hold us accountable. And then it's our job to dig in and figure out what are we going to do to make these numbers look better.
Right. Because I would think on the surface, you'd probably want almost every kid at that growth, ideally. And is it possible, when you say norms against other people in the country, this is already that data? Or is it possible to see how do other kids in other districts or other states or across the state do in this measurement?
They just, iReady gives us what a growth score for what the average growth would be for that grade level. And then what we looked at is we took 90% of that and said, how many kids are above 90% of that?
I see. So that's how they make their projection? That's based on national data?
So you would have hoped if we had said, if you had said 100%, you would figure 50% of our kids would be there if we're average across the nation. And I had hoped by setting that 90% goal, which then would also take into account a little bit of the social-emotional learning that we're focusing on in the other, in R3, as well as language acquisition, that that would balance some of that and give us realistic goals that classroom teachers could really look at instead of just saying that 100% of your effort should be on academics and you, again, squeeze in social-emotional and squeeze in language where you can. It needs to be educating the whole child. So we had hoped by looking at that, our numbers should be a little higher, but they aren't. And we just, but we've had this data for about two weeks and still need a little time to dig in and start looking at, you know, what's, what's the cause behind the data.
Right, okay. Yeah, thanks. Any other comments or questions?
Sure, along the same lines, John. The S-Back measurements that you're using for grades three through eight, it's still an option or a right of parents to opt their kids out of S-Back. Is that one of the explanations for the low N-count in the third grade?
The low N-count's primarily, primarily the students who don't qualify based on either the WAC Kids kindergarten readiness exam or that they have been in the district in the high mobility rates. I'm not aware that we had a huge opt-out in third grade. I'm looking at Matt to see if he...
There's a murmuring in the back room. No, Scott doesn't know anything, Matt doesn't know anything. We haven't heard of any anomaly that third grade opted out more than any other grade last year.
Probably they opted out in high school. Probably.
Yeah, high school, other than S-Back's graduation requirement.
So you have a sense that participation rates in S-Back in the elementary and middle schools is still pretty solid?
Yeah, we've, we've met our 90, 95%, 96% participation rate. 95, I was trying to remember.
Okay, that orients me around that.
Yeah, I believe we're compliant in that area.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. And so now we'll take a vote to accept the monitoring report for R2 for academic achievement as a first reading and be able to bring it forward for a second reading at our next board meeting. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so first reading of the monitoring report for R2 academic achievement has passed first reading and will be brought forward for a second reading at our next board meeting. So thank you for that. Next, we have the section on monitoring district operations. And we'll first talk about OE3, which is Treatment of Community Stakeholders. And we're also here talking about a monitoring report, talking about a first reading. And the board has received this monitoring report. And so I'll throw it over to you, John, to explain it further.
Yeah, like R2, we talked about Operations Expectation III, Community Stakeholder Relationships, two weeks ago in the workshop meeting, and presented you with the data on this. So this, again, the overall policy for this says the superintendent shall maintain an organizational culture that engages parents and citizens, treating them with respect, dignity, and courtesy. I wrote about a half-page on what that actually means that I shared with the board last year as an interpretation. And then we achieved some indicators for the four subgroup areas. In the first subgroup, it says the superintendent will protect confidential information. What we've provided with the board is our applicable data sharing agreements we have with our vendors and partners that have access to student data and what types of checks and balances we've put in place and controls we've put in place over that. We've also included to the board, with the board, the Acceptable Use Guidelines for Technology Resources that all of our employees sign and that everybody completed that last year. So we provided evidence that that was completed. We also provided to the board a listing of all the public record requests, and we got the link fixed this time. Actually, the link was fine. We had, somebody had it inadvertently deleted, about 90% of the data out of the Google Doc that you had access to. So as you can see now, it's all in there, and all of the public record requests we received from the last previous year were there, as well as any privileges that we asserted based upon personally identifiable information that had to be redacted from those public information requests, which is the evidence we presented to the board that we're maintaining confidentiality. And then we also agreed that we would report any instances that came to our awareness of confidential student or family information being inappropriately shared by an employee. On this one, this overall monitoring report is in compliance with an asterisk, and that asterisk is in this area. We actually had some student demographic data that was stolen out of a staff member's vehicle. That included eight individual student forms containing name, address, date of birth, student ID number, Washington student ID number, and some diagnosis codes for some special education students. We are providing one year of identity monitoring membership for the families that were impacted by this. So the district has taken corrective actions, but I just wanted the board to know, I can't say that we haven't had any breaches. We had a breach, somebody had a bag or a folder sitting in a car, their car was broken into and it was stolen. So three-point, section 3.1 would be in compliance with that one asterisk area that it wasn't at zero, but we think, I feel that we responded appropriately and within what should be considered compliance with this Operations Expectation. Relative to handling complaints, we created a new policy this year for public complaint resolution. It's always, people have just kind of gone through a chain of command, but we haven't had a formal policy that if you're unhappy with the way things are handled through that chain of command, here's a process that you follow to submit written complaints from the public. So that policy is in place, and we'll continue to mon, we'll monitor that this year. It didn't get in place till the end of last year, so we haven't had anybody actually follow that policy yet. But when we roll around next year, if we do have people to follow policy and submit those complaints, we'll be able to provide those to the board as evidence that we know we have the policy, that we're following the policy. as evidence that we know we have the policy, that we're following the policy. Section 3.3, Organizational Culture That Values Individual Differences Reasonably Includes People in Decisions That Affect Them Provides Open and Honest Communication in All Written and Interpersonal Interactions and Focuses on Common Achievement of the Board's Results Policies and is Open, Responsive, and Welcoming. Evidence is you wanted us to be able to bring back to you some key demographic groups are identified and specific avenues established to ensure input is collected, as well as how all perspectives were collected and recognized as part of a data analysis process. So what we provided to you was evidence from the bond outreach and how we involve the community and scoping the bond and informing the community of the bond, the community tours that we've held in the past year, the principal for a day program that we've held, staff input that we've had with listening sessions, student input with breakfast with the superintendent, breakfast with the board, where we create focus groups with our students, community input with strategic plan development, the open community meetings that we had, and in our early childhood program, having a Fall 2017 meeting, the natural leaders program that we have for our ELL families. And within special education, the work that we do to gather, provide information and answers. Also provided to the board some questions out of our panoramic community survey to set as a baseline. And what we discussed in workshop is that the goal of the district would be to have these results be at least equal to or better on an annual basis. And the two questions we're really focusing on are how well do administrators at your child's school create a school environment that helps children learn? We had 57% positive, 27% neutral, which gets us to 84% neutral to positive. So only 16% negative on that question. And then how do you, how big of a problem is the following issue becoming, how big of a problem is the following issue for becoming involved with your child's school current? And the question is, is school not welcoming to parents or welcoming to proper parents? And 81% feel that the schools are welcoming to parents. So that would be our baseline that we establish. And then the last section, the superintendent will foster partnerships with the community stakeholders and organizations that advance the district's mission and purpose. So we provided the board a summary of all the organizational partnerships that connect local organizations into classroom experiences that include the Police Activities League, Washington Extensions is SNAP, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, Washington Green Schools, VFW, CMAQ for Veterans Day assemblies, and the League Women's Voters, and the number of students that we impact. We also provided them a link to a Google Doc that shows the board all of the job shadows and internship and apprenticeship and external learning experiences over the past year that have connected with local businesses and organizations, which is a pretty extensive list and includes a whole lot of students. And then we also provided the board a summary of all the leadership involvement by district leadership with local organizations from the past year. So you can see, we kind of held that mostly to central office and didn't get down to the principal level. But you can see there's two pages of memberships and leadership roles that me and my cabinet and several of the central office administrators take in our local community. And then events held by the district to initiate and develop relationships with community leaders. Again, the community tours, principal for a day, and we've housed many tours at Hila, which is kind of the crown jewel of Vancouver. And people are amazed when they come visit that. It was recently featured in the WASDA quarterly periodical as, you know, this is actually a public school, believe it or not. It was a great article by WASDA.
And Honored Citizens Tour today, right?
Yes. So that's the data that we proved, we put together to comply with what we agreed to last fall. And we'll be bringing that every year with updates. So at this time, I recommend the board accepts some monitoring reports for Operations Expectation 3, Treatment of Community Stakeholders, as presented for first reading and move forward to second reading for final compliance.
Okay, thanks, John. At this time, are there any comments or questions from the audience about what is being discussed here for this policy and the monitoring report? Okay, seeing none. That closes the portion of the audience, question and comments about this policy. And I'll throw it to the board for a motion.
I recommend the board accept the monitoring reports for Operational Expectation 23, Treatment of Community Stakeholders, as presented for first reading and moving forward for second reading as in compliance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. What kind of comments or questions as I throw it to the board? What comments or questions do you have?
The only question I have is now that we have the information, the spreadsheet for the public request, I don't, the one category, it doesn't seem to be complete with the reason for the request, unless I'm missing it.
If this is the document you're looking at.
Yes.
Yeah, the text of request and the records produced or offset from the...
There's like, there's like one that seems like it had it in there, what the person was asking for. But I guess I would find that as important information, like what people are actually wanting to know from the district.
I've been trying to look and see what you're...
What column does it go in?
Said Julie, I'll just jump in. And because public records, anyone can request them for any reason, as long as it's not for commercial use, like mailing lists or things like that, they don't necessarily have to tell us that they volunteer, what they're doing for it. I believe Scott notes that.
Oh, I, oh, in his part on the last column?
Is that what you're looking at for the request for public information?
Let me pull it up here.
Yeah. Public records request log 2017-18, the column text of request is missing data except for one item on the night may...
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And the text of request. And I mean, I see what the action is on what we provided or what we did to close the loop. But it doesn't really show like what, what the initial request was.
So we can circle back with Scott.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you.
And I think as we get into this, it's still finding in compliance that the information that Julie was talking about, I agree, is good information. And it's like, what did people write to ask for the requests? Is a way to get a sense of the community's attitudes?
Yeah. Like what, what type of information are people requesting when they're doing a information's request?
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Julie. Any other comments or questions?
Just comment to like, with most of these other baselines that you and the staff have been producing, there's always in each of these, in the R policies so far, in the OEs so far, there's this piece of data that we've never had access to see before. And this time for me, it was the CTE business partnerships.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah. You know, you come down to the bottom of this and realize that 1,889 students had some kind of CTE exposure. I know like 216 of them were from the single morning at Women in STEM or Girls in STEM. The event itself was so remarkable for showing people who might not think that they are eligible or aligned with these kinds of experiences or this kind of career path, that yeah, yes, you are. I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to the questions that this data drives out and the way that we can connect that to our results policies and drive better results for kids. And it's a really good start.
Yeah, I'm with Rob on that list. I was really surprised about how extensive the list is of business partners and opportunities that kids have had for job shadowing and other exposure to the business world. So yeah, that is one thing I wanted to comment as well. Any other comments or questions on the board?
Cabinet is busy.
Yeah.
The number of boards that the district's leaders participate in is much larger than I had thought, and the kinds of boards. It's neat to see this kind of involvement with the wider community as a reflection of us and Clark County as a whole. It's a great place to live.
Yeah, and I would comment that staff have always done this. It's not like they're doing it just because we're now tracking it. But it's nice to be able to report how involved our leadership is throughout the community because we realize education is a partnership and we need to work together as a community to make this happen. And anything we can do to strengthen our community partners helps strengthen our systems.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board? Okay, so at this time, it's been moved and seconded. We'll take a vote on the first reading on this monitoring report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the monitoring report for OE3 has passed first reading and will bring it forward for a second reading at our next board meeting. And next on our agenda is to go to a second reading for OE4, Our Operational Expectations for Personnel Administration. We're talking about the monitoring report as well. And at this point, the board has received that monitoring report. We've talked about it workshop, passed first reading at our last board meeting. I'll throw it over to you, John, for any updates.
I don't have any updates on this. I went through it in detail at the last board meeting. I received no comments from anybody, staff, board, or the community. OE4 is our personnel, personnel administration. And just to summarize it, that we had, most of the areas were in compliance. We do have a couple of asterisks, asterisks on working on gathering some additional data on that for the board. Because part of this was, we didn't finalize what the data collection was going to be for this policy until early last spring. And so it took the HR department several months to put the systems in place to be able to collect this data. So some of what we have the data collection system in place, but we haven't started collecting data. And that's why you've got some asterisks and one TBD. So based upon that, at this time, I recommend the board accepts the monitoring reports for OE4 Personnel Administration as presented for second reading and in compliance with noted exceptions.
Okay, thanks, John. I didn't see if any comments or questions about this policy or the monitoring report. Okay, seeing none, I'll now go to the board and call for a motion.
I recommend the board accepts the monitoring reports for Operational Expectation OE4 Personnel Administration as presented for second reading and in compliance with noted exceptions.
Second.
That was a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just trying to make sure I heard it.
Voice cut, stop.
So it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any comments or questions as a board?
I have a question. After the first reading, did we have any feedback from any of the marketing groups or staff in any way?
Nope, not a peep from anyone on this.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess the only comment I would make that in a system as large as ours, it takes a lot of work to hire as many employees as we do. And our HR department does a phenomenal job keeping records and track of everyone. Because as we can see in the monitoring reports, there's a lot of work behind the scenes that goes into it. So, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Second reading.
Yeah, second reading. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. We'll now take a vote. All in favor to accept the monitoring report as a second reading as in compliance with noted exceptions, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we've passed second reading. We are, the monitoring report is in compliance with noted exceptions. Thanks, John. And the last policy in this section is OE5, Financial Planning. We're also talking about a monitoring report. We're also talking about second reading. So I'll throw it over to you, John, for any updates.
And you've seen this one multiple times. I have no updates. We've got no comments from the board, community, or staff after the first reading two weeks ago. The reason you've seen this several times is we originally brought this in August in conjunction with the budget. And then after negotiations were completed, we had to bring it back in Section 5.5 that requires the superintendent to develop a budget that assures financial soundness for future years, where we were required to bring a four-year budgetary plan. We had to modify that budgetary plan following negotiations. So we brought this back, took it to workshop, and then first reading last time, and now second reading. So, you know, the one note was that we do have a budgetary plan, but it's going to require either additional revenues or some expenditure reductions in the coming years to be able to maintain fiscal soundness. So based upon the requirements of the Operations Expectation and the current position, I recommend the board accepts the monitoring report for OE5 Financial Planning as presented for second reading and as in compliance.
Okay, thanks, John. Any comments or questions about this from the audience? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I recommend that the board accepts the monitoring reports for Operational Expectation OE5 Financial Planning as presented for second reading as in compliance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. What comments or questions do we have as a board? My comment is I really like this policy and I really like the requirement to have the, you know, best guess that that four-year look at where our budget is, because I know there's going to be some challenges ahead. And it gives us the best possible look of, you know, what, how we need to plan and how we need to go forward as we face some challenges over the next few years. So anything else in terms of comments or questions?
Just again, thanks to Mike's department and all that participate in putting financial, I mean, the financial side of the district, especially of our size, is complicated. And there's so many variables as it pertains to the different marketing groups and just how money, how we receive money and how we're allowed to allocate it out. I mean, it's a complicated situation. I wish that it was easier to understand. But I think by having such clear expectations for the district by the board in this policy and the types of monitoring that we'll have of it, I think it's going to make it a little easier for not only the board, but the community to understand it.
John, I think I just want to leave it with a comment. The forecast is a forecast, if I remember what Mike explained, that holds all things equal. Continue with the levy rate passing. I don't remember whether it considered the 50 cent technology levy that's been discussed. But if it's, if it's just that, it looks like we're running a deficit and might be violating more policies. But we aren't going to treat this as inviolate numbers. We're going to take some action to preserve fund balances and fiscal, and be fiscally responsible with the assets of the public. And I think it's worth saying that before we finally put this through as part of the compliance that we see.
Correct. It does not include any technology levy. That's why I said without additional revenues or expenditure reductions. This is given today's rate of spending and what we know for certain about our future revenues.
And even more so important, that we have a fund reserve balance for if we face uncertainty in the next several years, that at least we have that and we're not showing a deficit as we know that there's other school districts that have shown their budget that way.
It's, even with that caveat, it's a forecast that keeps us in the black. I'll draw all four of those forecasted years. And that's also comforting and a good thing to see. It means that we have room to take that action.
And just to recap, also, the assumption on that projection is we are passing a replacement levy.
Replacement M&amp;L levy at a rate of $1.15.
Right, okay. Okay, any further comments or questions? Okay, we'll now take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so OE5 Financial Planning, second reading monitoring report is approved as in compliance. Thanks a lot. So next, we have matters reserved for the board action. And we're talking about Policy 1900, which is the sale of real property. I'll turn it over to you, John, for a...
And this was a policy that was recommended by WASDA that we didn't necessarily have on the book. That for the most part restates the legal requirements for the district to surplus and sell real property. When we develop the governance policies, that is something the board reserved the right for. So while WASDA would recommend this would be in the 6,800 series, what we've tried to do is move all of the true board policies that you're still responsible for to the 1,000 series. 1000 series. So our recommendation is to renumber this as Policy Number 1900. And it's pretty much the boilerplate WASDA recommendation. We did bring this for first reading back in August, and then with all of the changes to board meetings that happened at the end of August and early September, it just got dropped off until Elizabeth reminded me of this last week and said, hey, remember, we never did finalize and do second reading. So, you know, it was on the first reading back on the, I think, of August. And I have received no comments on it since that time. So at this time, I would recommend to the board that you consider passing and accept the new policy for board, Policy 1900 Sale of Real Property.
Okay, thanks, John. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
This is, so this is brand new, except for we have a renumbering. So we had it as a brand new policy with the old 6882, but now we're just moving it to 1900?
Well, it's brand new, but the WASDA would recommend that it was 6882, so we struck back and put in our number system.
So I guess I'll call for a motion. Yeah.
I move for adoption of Board Policy 1900, Sale of Real Property.
It's been moved, it's been seconded. So it's been moved and seconded. As a board, do we have any additional comments or questions?
I already asked my question, I apologize.
No, that's fine, I don't mind.
I think just, it's pretty much the same as what we've been doing as it pertains to property purchases, but it's good for the public to know that we can't just be willy-nilly about selling land that we own or that there's protections about the price and things of that nature, so.
Right, and there's certain laws that we're held to, right?
Yes.
That we need to adhere to. So that's basically what this policy is saying. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll now take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Policy 1900 has been approved for a second reading as presented. Thanks a lot. Next on our agenda is the Good News Report. And for that, I call upon Director of Communications and Community Engagement, Gail Spohler.
Good evening. So I realized as I went through the news report, there's a lot of food-related good news. I know Todd would be excited about that. So we'll start right off with an event that Todd attended last week, which, thank you to Chartwells for bringing us again, another fine dining event, this time at Crestline Elementary. We were pleased to also welcome City Councilmember Christover there and a group of very delighted students as they had a short etiquette lesson and then sat down and had a four-course meal. I understand, I was not there, but I understand the dessert was a good big hit. We also have a photo of Mike Merlino eating a vegetable.
All right.
For those of us that know Mike, that does not happen very often, so the etiquette lesson paid off, at least for Mr. Merlino. Moving on, Burton Elementary received the Washington Green School Silver Certification. They were led by Green Team Leaders Rebecca Chase and Teresa Port. I think the most interesting thing is that the students formed teams called Lot Watchers, and they use their resource time, their recess time to go in and monitor who had turned off their lights and, you know, did other energy conservation things. So when students give up recess, you know that they're pretty dedicated to working in this, a great award for them. We had three students from Evergreen's Floral Design Team take first place in the Regional Flora Chopped Competition. They were able to exhibit their floral designs in the presence of some of the region's top professional floral designers. And then Union High School Robotics Team Geared Reaction was awarded a $2,250 grant from the Office of Superintendent Public Construction's Tech Challenge Grant. And they have become a highly competitive team, and I know that they will be using that grant money to purchase additional items. And I'm looking at Rob, he probably knows exactly what they have their eye on to use that grant for.
I think they've already used it.
Yeah, they already used it. They were very excited.
My son is on that team, and in connection with the requirement for a parent to be there, I ended up at their practice on Saturday and saw the robot that they've built, and it is a sharp piece of engineering.
Great, so the grant's already in use. Last week as well, the Learn Here Project, which is regional business of community leaders gathering to recognize educational system leaders and volunteers, recognized our recently-retired finance manager, Don Nelson, as well as, I know, you all know, our active district volunteers Kurt and Janet Stone. They have been involved in a number of different endeavors throughout the school, throughout the district, and so they were honored at that event last week. Moving into more food-related items, we have such great partners with not only Chartwells, but Washington State University, the SNAP program. So you see three different events that happened just in the last month and a half. One at Cascade Middle School during National Breakfast Challenge Month. Another at Furcrest with the Harvest Celebration. And then one at Endeavour Elementary, which they actually got the students to eat locally-grown zucchini, which is, you know, a great thing for elementary students. So we are so pleased to have those partnerships and those happen monthly in our schools. I know several of you also attended a nonpartisan political forum at Heritage High School, where we had candidates from the 17th, 18th, 49th Congressional, or State Races, as well as the Third Congressional United States Race, and we had candidates there. Great interaction with the students, and able to do question and answer. And all of the students throughout the district were invited to participate. And finally, it was, I guess, another food-related item again. Busy, busy time. 260 volunteers from our community assisted the Family and Community Resource Center, along with Crestline Elementary, and packaged 13,000 meal supplements in heat-sealed bags that they will be going home with families across the district and the greater Vancouver community. And that was in partnership not only with our FCRCs, but a group called Generosity Feeds, the Branch Christian Church, Malapizza, Fred Meyer, and Dutch Bros. So that's just a little bit of the good news for this month.
Thanks, Gail. Any comments or questions for Gail? Nothing? Okay, thanks, Gail. And next we have a budget update, and for that, we call upon Chief Operations Officer, Mike Merlino. Mike?
First start with a little good news reported, I don't know if anybody saw the cooter game last night.
I saw your little tweet about it.
Yeah, it was a good game. You want to go out, got the DVR, if anybody wants to come over and watch it tonight after the meeting.
This Saturday might be a huge game.
Yeah, we'll talk about that at the workshop.
Can we turn it off at halftime?
Yeah, we can. We'll talk about that at the board workshop. So I just really quickly, we're still working on closing the books. I want to remind everyone that the, the main thing for today is just kind of update on where enrollment is. We've had two months count so far. We had one mid-September, and then we had one almost like, it felt like two days later, because we got to the end of September so quickly. The main issue that we faced, one of the two main issues we faced last year was enrollment being under what we had projected in the 17, 18 school year. At the end of the year, we were almost 400 kids below, which, pretty significant amount of money. The second was the transportation. We talked throughout the year about that. This year, so enrollment, we were probably trying to be pretty conservative in terms of the enrollment this year. In September, I came in feeling like we were in a pretty good spot as it related to the average for the year. Obviously, every month, we get one month better, so that by the time we get to June, we're really good at projecting. We actually, to me, a little bit of surprise, our enrollment accelerated more in October of 18 from September than it did last year. So I kind of, in my mind, I'm thinking, school starts September, whatever it was, 15, I don't know what, it was in the middle of the month. And here, we're going to come back on October. First, you'd think most of the kids after the strike were here the first day. We actually had a larger increase this year from September's count to October's count than we did last year. The area that we were most increased in was at the high school level, which was positive, because when I talked to you a month or so ago, high school seemed to be where we had the largest amount where we were going to be below what we had projected. So right now, I'm estimating that we'll be about 90 over what we had budgeted. So very positive. If that holds, that's, that's a good thing. I mean, it should, I don't know why, we would be significantly different this year than we have in other years. So that's a good thing for this year. Last year, we will, Bill's not quite done, but he'll wrap that up. And at the meeting next in November, we'll give you what the final numbers were for last year. On the transportation front, one of the things that we were able to influence coming into this year was the way that the funding is delivered. It's based upon, well, the budget had, one of the main issues that we went through with the strike and with McCleary was the acceleration of the salaries for teacher salaries, administrative salaries, classified salaries. Well, they also pushed money through the transportation formula to accelerate funding for transportation as well, although their formula doesn't really work that way. So we were able to, along with Vancouver and EST 112, and actually, WEA helped us put a lot of pressure on OSPI, ultimately led to the, a couple legislators directing OSPI to distribute this additional salary funds in the 18, 19 school years earlier than they typically would. So that helped us, we budgeted for it, so it's not like we weren't expecting it to happen, but we budgeted for this. But this is at least one piece of the transportation puzzle that they're funding, and so that's a positive thing. We got 2 million allocated to us that we were expecting, but remember, we were expecting safety net money last year that never materialized. So the safety net, we're still, we're working now to ensure that we'll have access to those funds. And I had a conference call with OSPI last week on changing the, they're going to come up with a new formula, how can we help make sure that districts like Evergreen are not negatively impacted? So I'm feeling better about this year from the perspective of the revenue side. Of course, we weren't expecting necessarily the strike and all of that to occur, so not as positive on that side, but, you know, we'll work through it. And I've mentioned to John, after we get through this month's October payroll, once we're done by the end of the month, we'll have a couple months, we'll start making estimates and get a good sense of what the impact will be on us for this school year and also how that might affect our, our future. So, final numbers at next month's meeting. Things so far this year look well with respect to enrollment and go coots on Saturday. Sorry, had to do that.
Any comments or questions for Mike?
About the coots?
Just related to finance.
Related to the budget update? So enrollment does look much closer this year in terms of projections.
Yeah, overall enrollment is trending the last couple years down. But what we're, where we budgeted, we're exceeding what we had planned for. And, you know, anecdotally, when you look at that, I really kind of feel like what we've seen, we had about four or five years where kindergarten enrollment kind of spiked up. And I think those are the years where we had full-day kindergarten before anyone else had in the area. I think our kindergarten numbers are kind of coming back to where they historically had been. And in doing that, you're talking anywhere from 100 to 200 kids a year for four or five years, that's quite a few kids that ran through the system. And so, you know, we'll just keep projecting kind of what we've seen historically.
Anything else for Mike? Hey, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda are board comments, do we have any?
I had a few, just wanted to share, let's see, last Tuesday, the CREDC Lunch, which is always interesting in getting that business perspective. And of course, they now want to, they now have a good handle on schools are part of this, you know, part of the economy and part of what we need to be together on, so that was good. And then Gail mentioned the Learn Here Real Hero Awards. Julie and I were there, Rob was there with John, and Gail was there. That was such a touching event, just people who just care about schools and go the extra mile. There were some really touching stories, I enjoyed that quite a bit. Julie and I went to the Girls Inc. event, and that was another really inspirational gathering of mostly women in town, talking about a really great program that really impacts our girls, and I'm excited to learn some more about it. I just, it was, it was really inspirational, wasn't it?
It was the first time they had it in Vancouver. Normally, in Portland, they had it downtown Vancouver, and it was pretty much led by students at Evergreen, specifically Covington. The student speaker was from Covington. Before the lunch-in, they had tables set outside where the students that, from, there was a couple of high school students there, but most of them were Covington students. There was, I think it was a Chehala, the Union Gal. They were leading activities, really about empowerment and what it takes to be a leader. And they were leading all of these women that attended, well, mostly women, that attended the lunch-in through some different activities. And it was really, really fun to watch them, and they did such a good job.
They did, they did a really good job.
Wow, that does sound like fun. Any other comments?
Yeah, I wanted to mention, so CREDC, and I agree with everything that you said about that. Nothing more to say there. As you know, I was appointed to the Online Learning Advisory Committee, which met last Wednesday in federal way at the WEA headquarters. I had a chance to meet and talk with Stephen Miller, Vice President of WEA about welfare for kids, and it came out to be a really good conversation. I wanted to mention the committee meeting, though, that during that advisory committee of what must have been 25 people, so it was a big meeting of OSPI asking questions about their handbook for online learning and how it connects with alternative learning, what kind of emerged is that what Heather Fowler has been doing with Legacy High School is not typical of alternative learning experiences in the state. And when I mentioned to the program advisor, not the, not the procedures auditor, the program advisor, that Heather was running a hybrid model, and that we were requiring things like our online students to have contact with humans. Because, it's a funny way to say it, but it's because of that, that need for young people to have connection with adults who care. And that's not something that you generally get with a correspondence course that's sent to you from some distance program. That insistence has doubled the graduation rate of IQ Academy and Legacy High School combined, haven't it?
That's been huge.
When I said that to her, she immediately became very interested in visiting. And talking with Heather about that, you know, that's, that's an alliance as well with Spokane Virtual Learning, they were also there. And so some, some really productive conversations and attention by the state to the good things that are happening here are possible. I was fiddling around in my, in my bag looking for the business card, but I think I forgot to bring it with me. But I'll forward that contact information on to you, if you or Heather or Bill want to reach out to that part of OSPI, invite them down. I'd sure be interested in coming along, see what questions they have in Legacy.
And when we started to revamp the program at Legacy, we brought Spokane Virtual down and picked their brains on what was working, what wasn't, so they were a huge resource to us, and that's a good structure.
There's a lot of interest there in making sure that kids who do online learning have access to teachers, Washington-certificated, was a, was a set of words that kept coming up. We have to make sure that our certificate- coming up, where we have to make sure that our certified teachers have contact with these kids over these subjects. And so that was kind of the whole thrust of the meeting.
Interesting. So that model is atypical, you're saying?
That was the impression that I got, yeah. The committee has a lot of online learning companies on it, advising the state on what it is they can do, but it was, it was a cordial meeting without, I think without a lot of, I guess it could look turf war. There wasn't any turf war there. It was, it had focus on kids that I was really glad to see. You know, that's all I have to say about it.
Great. Any other board comments? Okay, so now we'll go on to the next item, feature agenda items. Are there any items that the board would like to bring forward in addition to our existing agenda items? So it didn't look like there's any at this time. Okay, so at this time, we'll go into recess to sign papers. After that, we will be reconvening in a workshop in this room, and we'll be talking about OE10, the Operational Expectations Policy 10 on learning environment. We'll be talking about the monitoring report of that policy. We'll also have a levy discussion, we'll have a board meeting de-read, we'll have a legislative update, and a superintendent's update. And so now we are in recess. Thank you.